Okay, I'd like to call the Committee of the Whole Meeting for Monday, December 20th, 2021, under order. Roll call, please.
Mayor Casino?
Here.
Trustee Carroll?
Here.
Trustee Curtis? Trustee Gately?
Here.
Trustee Lowery?
Here.
Trustee Nedved?
Here.
Trustee Salazar?
Here.
Audience comments? Would you like to speak? Trustee comments? First item under discussion, recreational vehicles. Steve?
Thank you, Mayor. First item is the recreational vehicle discussion that's been ongoing the last couple meetings. Just as a point, you have an email in front of you tonight from a resident who did want us to share their opinion on the matter with the Village Board. So that is in front of you and was emailed to you earlier today. Mike is going to take us through the last conversation we had and the next steps to move forward.
Thanks, Steve. Yeah, November 15th, we had a resident show up to the meeting and discuss some of the hardship associated with the code related to recreation of vehicles. And again, North Aurora, we sort of all encompass recreational vehicles with boats, trailers, campers, RVs, things of that nature. So the Village Board directed staff to bring back discussion on the topic, which we did in December 6th, the Committee of the Whole. And at that point in time, we just brought back the general provisions to kind of just discuss where we were at. There were, the board discussion happened sort of both ways, from both perspective of, you know, over regulating recreational activities and then maintaining the neighborhood aesthetic. So, but the resulting from that meeting was the direction the Village Board did want us to give additional timeframe for RVs and campers and recreational vehicles to get ready for the weekend. So as of right now, the code says that on the weekends, you can have in front of your house in your driveway, a recreational vehicle from Friday noon to Monday noon. So the Village Board had directed us at that point to come back with additional language that opened up a little bit, again, just for preparation for the weekend, that would allow for recreational vehicle to be in the, in front of the property from Thursday at 6:00 PM, then through Monday at noon. So that's what we had brought forward. Also too, anytime we have a code like this, it's just an opportunity to open up the book and sort of clean things up and clarify. So as part of this, we did include that additional language. So it started at Thursday at 6:00 PM to Monday noon. We also included language that is, which is provision A, which doesn't allow recreational vehicles to be parked or stored in a public right of way. That language existed in 2013. We were directed at one point to remove it. I had gone through the myths. I'm not exactly sure why, if I'm being asked with you, but that should be a provision. I believe it's because it's maybe regulated elsewhere in the village code. Some of the other cleanups were just basically, the way we've been practicing is if you have one, if you're one recreational vehicle in your driveway, you can't have one stored in your backyard. If you have one stored in your backyard, you can't have one in your driveway. So basically, that's cleaning up, basically saying like, if you, you can't have more than one recreational vehicle outside in your property at any one point. You can have as many as you want in your garage, your detached garage, your shed, if you will, but you can only have one being stored at any point in time. And again, if it's, if it's in front of the house, it can only be from, then would be Thursday to Monday, but if it's behind the house, it can be there full time, as long as it's parked on a hard surface and located outside of any setbacks. So those are the major changes that are associated with that. This still has to go to a Plan Commission public hearing, considering it's, it's in the zoning code. So we do have a text amendment scheduled for public hearing before the Plan Commission on January 4th. So they'll be discussing this provision more in detail at that point as well. So just want to get some feedback from the board on the current language, if there's any questions or comments.
Mike, I had a question. On par, what types of phone calls do you get about this? Do you get complaints from people in the neighborhood? Or how does it kind of go in terms of people who are complaining that it's too short versus people who don't like it to begin with?
Yeah, I think it's a matter of perspective on which staff member you ask and which side of, which side of the, the provision that the resident might be under. You know, we, our code officer probably gets more, more complaints about the provisions as they are being too restrictive. But from my perspective, I've heard, I've heard a lot of complaints about, you know, having, you know, recreational vehicles and trailers out in front of the homes. I think it's just a matter of perspective. This does tend to be one of our more high-volume type code complaints, maybe the highest volume. So you're going to kind of get a full range and spectrum of complaints.
I'm good with it.
I don't know. I feel, I feel, I see both sides, but to, to, if you take Thursday at 6:00 PM to now Monday at noon, it really is, it's 50% of the week. And so I'm a little bit conflicted about what the right thing to do. Laura said before, 90% of people don't have RVs. I think of myself, I live here in the village, and I probably wouldn't be happy if I had some enormous RV parked in the driveway next to me. That's how I would feel about it. For half the week.
Anybody else?
I'm fine with it.
Mike Lowery's fine with it. Mark?
I'm fine with the change.
Laura?
I'm fine with it. I just, you know, I mean, it's such a small population of RVers in the village. I mean, that said, I mean, we are a traditional suburban residential community, and people who want to live here need to understand that, that maybe we're not the place to want to live if you want to have a 40-foot RV and a boat and a trailer. So we do need to stay true to, to what we are.
Laura, can you talk more? I can't really even hear you here. Can you talk right into your microphone? Sorry, are you saying that you're fine with it? Say it again. Oh, it's on.
Okay.
Are you saying you're fine moving into six, six?
As written, yeah.
I was just thinking we should stay true to being a traditional residential, suburban residential neighborhood.
So I just had a question about the trailer. So we're not, it's not like utility trailers, trailers with quads or things like that when you say trailers?
So everything, everything that, basically, this includes all of the above. We really don't start to separate and parse out which is, you know, a RV versus-
I meant like a work trailer, landscape trailer, carpenter as a trailer. It's allowed as well from Thursday night to Monday.
Correct. Yes. Yeah. We've been, you know, we've been, we've been working with people in the past where we're definitely more tightening things from a code enforcement perspective. You know, we've been leading in the past with some of the provisions, but it's gotten to the point where we do receive complaints and we are just kind of trying to be a little bit more black and white, cut and dry with how we enforce it.
I mean, most of the neighborhoods in North Aurora have some sort of homeowners association that regulates this also. So just because we may be more relaxed on our rules doesn't mean that the homeowners association can't find a resident. They can be more restrictive than we are. And can find residents that have a work truck or, or trailers. So I'm fine.
It might be a third of the community. I wouldn't think it's more than that. A lot of the older sections, they don't have HOAs, Timber Oaks, East West Side, so. Okay. So move ahead as written, I guess?
Yeah, well, thank you for the feedback. We'll take this language and we'll take it to the Plan Commission, see what, how will they respond to it and bring it back.
All right. Thanks. Item two, Steve?
Thank you. In front of you tonight is, item number two on the agenda is about the Riverfront Park Plaza concept. We have Jody Mariano from Tuscan Associates on Zoom, who's going to walk us through a concept. But just for a little history before we get started on the presentation, this actually goes back a few years ago. The Village Board at the time, back in about 2017, we actually looked at creating a landscape master plan for Riverfront Park shortly after we acquired it from the Park District. The, the park design has several amenities, including hillside seating, plaza area, stages and whatnot. And we actually were going forward with a concept back in 2019. The board liked the concept. We're going to show it to you again tonight. And we were going to start to build it, but that's right before we heard the state was interested in removing the Fox River Dam again. So we kind of put the plaza on hold because the plaza is adjacent. It's not dependent necessarily, but it's adjacent to the mill race. The mill race is fed by the Fox River. There was some concern that if the Fox River Dam went away, that the water next to the plaza would go away. And therefore, you know, we should see how that pans out. It's been several years and the IDNR's review is still ongoing and it's, and we don't know if it's going to be finished anytime soon. So the question became, do we move forward with the, the Park Plaza concept, get ready to move forward with it? And then if we have to adapt to it later, we can. And quite frankly, the studies that, for the dam removal are going to study the impact on the mill race anyway. So the board will have a say in whether they, they want the dam to be removed and whether the, the mill race will stay or not. So that being said, Jody's going to walk us through the concept, see if the board still likes the idea going forward. If you do, we actually have a agreement with TESCA and WBK Engineering lined up. So the board wants to go forward. The next step would be to go back to a board meeting, get those agreements approved to finalize the engineering, finalize the concept for construction bids and actually get that going next year and, and get it built. There's actually $400,000 in the budget this year for this project in our capital fund. We also have $225,000 grant from the state of Illinois that we've been, in talking with the DCO, we've been checking with them to see if we can use that. And it sounds like that money can be used. It's for infrastructure projects. Sounds like it could be used on this project if we'd like. With that, Jody, are you ready to walk us through this?
Yes, I'm here. Good evening, everyone. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Wonderful. Well, thank you very much for having me this evening. Again, my name is Jody Mariano. I'm Principal Landscape Architect with TESCA Associates, and I'm here to kind of walk you through some history about the Riverfront Park and Plaza. So next slide. So I'll talk a little bit about the Riverfront Park Master Plan and then also the proposed Riverfront Plaza concept, and then happy to take any questions that you all may have. Next slide. Just as Steve mentioned, we have a little bit of history here. So back in 2016, we, TESCA worked with staff on the Riverfront Park Master Plan. We had an ad hoc committee that guided us in the development of the Park Master Plan. The cover of the report is at the left. We met twice, and once in 2016, once at the beginning of 2017, and then we presented to the Committee of the Whole in February of 2017. Following that meeting, we continued to work with staff on the development of the plaza itself. And I'll show you a little bit about that. And that Village Board meeting took place in August of 2018. Next slide. So when we worked on the Riverfront Park Master Plan, we were working with an ad hoc committee, including representatives from, from village staff, also from Fox Valley Park District and the North Aurora River District Alliance. So it was a, a great group. We had a lot of great discussion and were able to build consensus with, with all of these fine folks here. Next slide. So the Riverfront Park site, the master plan looked at basically all four quadrants along State Street here, looking at the Riverfront Park area at Village Hall, at the northeast quadrant. But we were also looking at improvements to things like wayfinding and gateway signage to help guide folks between Riverfront Park area and also the other amenities at this intersection, the North Aurora Island Park. At the time, it was the future Silo Park, but we're so thrilled to hear about all the great things that have been happening there. And then also the small green space behind the fire station at the northwest quadrant. Next slide. So the Riverfront Park site itself is pictured here, the intersection here of State Street and Butterfield Road. The Village Hall building, of course, is over there on the east side and the balance of the park site is shown here in green. Next slide. You know, some existing photos are here. We don't have to spend too much time on these, but there was a lot of interest in making sure we were providing good access between all of these various roadway locations, the parking lots and the, in the park. And as you can tell, we have a lot of topography to contend with. So these are all things that we were looking at. Next slide. The mill race area, of course, is here. This is the area that we're focusing in on for, for tonight. But you can see the Village Hall on the right-hand side, the mill race in the foreground, and then that outfall bridge structure is something that WBK Engineering has been assisting with some evaluations of it, as we've been kind of making progress on the concepts. Next slide. And of course, you know, this is a lovely park. As you all know, views to the river are really pristine. It's just lovely in there. And so there, you know, all along, we've been working with the committee to make sure that we work with the existing topography and the features of the site, including all these lovely trees, the interconnected pathways and maintaining our views. Next slide. And Water Wonders is really like a, a once-in-a-lifetime type of a place. That's a precious gem that also would be protected, of course. And then the committee liked the idea to expand it throughout the, kind of the, the areas of the park that I'll show you in a moment. Next slide. And his history. So there's a lot of great historical interpretation out there. That's something that the committee was very interested in, making sure that we continued to do moving forward. Next slide. So the concept plan is here. I'm going to break it up into two sections, but just to kind of get you oriented. State Street, of course, is at the south side. Butterfield Road is at the east. Village Hall is that long skinny building. We've got the Village Hall parking at the north, and of course, the Fox River on the west side. Next slide. So a couple of things, these are just highlighting the main features of the Riverfront Park area. Access to the park was really very important, thinking about how people get to this area. And they're getting here via State Street, via Butterfield Road, through Village Hall as a pedestrian, or the Village Hall parking lot. So these are all things that, you know, we're kind of working in tandem to make sure that we were making it easy to get in and then get around. So maintaining all of the existing features were, was important. We've got an interconnected system of pathways, and we've expanded upon that with some additional boardwalk features up along the mill race on the west side of the mill race. As I mentioned before, maintaining our Water Wonders feature as it is, but also expanding it a little bit to the north with either water features or dry creek beds and plantings to, you know, continue the interest in maintaining native plantings and sustainable treatments. Of course, maintaining all of the existing wonderful trees that are out there, and then working with the topography. So we've got a big open lawn space at the south, and the intent is to keep that. We've got hillside areas, so we've proposed some improvements there to provide some more seating in that area. And then this entry plaza that's here kind of nestled in the center, between the parking at the north and the hillside seating at the south, and the Water Wonders at the west, and the Village Hall at the east, we felt like this entry plaza was kind of this central hub to the park. It was a place where, once you came into the park, whether it be from the parking lot or Village Hall, it was kind of a place to orient yourself so you knew where you'd want to go next. It's a place for informal seating and gathering, and it could also be a place for small village events. And we understand that there've been a lot of wonderful events already, and so, or in that area. And so we thought that the plaza was a great opportunity to, to continue to formalize that. Next slide. These slides just look a little bit more in detail at these areas. So this is the south portion of the concept plan. So here you can see the open lawn at the south up against State Street. There's a proposal for a pavilion. The backside of that pavilion could function as a, you know, a very attractive sign to folks that are traveling on State Street. And then you can see the brown boardwalk, walkways with overlooks and piers for fishing would occur up along the west side of the mill race. And all of these pathways would tie into the existing pathways that are already there up against the, the Fox River. Next slide. This shows the north side of the park. So again, Village Hall is that long brown skinny building. And here you can see the central plaza area, that seating area that kind of knits together all of these pathways that are coming to and from the green spaces of the park, the Village Hall, and also the parking lot. Water Wonders is shown there in addition to some expansion to Water Wonders. And we've also included a kayak launch and also a boardwalk overlook. I should mention too, that you'll see that little inset at the top left of the drawing here. We never disregarded the option that at some point in the future, maybe the mill race could be reopened. We would love for that to be the case. And so depending on what comes out of the Illinois DNR's evaluation of the dam, we wanted to leave that as an option. So of course, that would impact things like parking in the landscape, but we anticipate that the plaza could still function, whether the mill race is open or whether it remains closed like it is today. Next slide. So some imagery for the things that the committee was excited about and promoting in the park. You know, we were trying to maintain natural materials using things like wood. And also, of course, we've got railings that we would need to provide. Also incorporating non-slip surfaces, native landscaping. Next. Plazas and gathering spaces, looking at incorporating things like native rockout crappings and boulders to kind of, you know, recall the history of the site. Next slide. The Water Wonders extension, of course, is here. And so, you know, these could also be expanded to have just more native gardens and dry creek beds for exploration. So at this point, I wanted to kind of transition from what we looked at during the Riverfront Park into the plaza itself. So in the Park Master Plan, we were focusing in on the central area between Village Hall to the east, parking lot to the north, open lawn to the south, Water Wonders in the river to the west. This central area is what we kind of saw as being potential phase one for the implementation of this, of this park. And I should mention too, that oftentimes with master plans, these are things that get built over multiple phases over a period of time. So it's very natural to kind of pick a project like this first to move forward with. So this central area is the area that we focused in on with staff in 2018 and 2019 for this plaza project. Next slide. So this drawing, I understand, looks pretty different from the last one, but just to orient you, Village Hall is at the east. You can see the existing pathway system and the Fox River at the west on the left-hand side. The existing Water Wonders is also at the left, those blue shapes with the rocks all the way around them. And then the mill race is on the east side. That's also in blue. As we looked more closely at the Riverfront Plaza opportunity, there was a desire to, you know, continue the natural and curvilinear shapes of the area. And so what we have proposed here is a couple of things. One, thinking about how people get to this plaza. So if you're coming from the parking lot to the north, there would be a small little kind of, you know, bulb out in concrete that would take you down to the entry plaza. That's marked there as entry plaza, the net circle area. If you were coming from Village Hall where there's an exit door or the part, the sidewalks near Village Hall, you would walk across the, the mill race outfall structure, which would need to be cleaned up, freshened up a little bit and made more safe with a railing and a new concrete walk. And that would bring you towards the west. And then there are additional asphalt pathways that would connect you back up to the existing asphalt path, also to the west. So then we've also proposed a couple of plaza spaces. So from the northern entry plaza that is in the shape of a circle, there are a couple of steps that would take you down to what we call the upper plaza. The upper plaza would also offer an overlook onto the mill race area, could be a place for fishing. We've got some outcropping stones and seating areas. We've got a fireplace feature. And then one step down again to the south would be the future lower plaza. So we're working with topography and trying to hug that mill race and provide connections back to the asphalt path. In yellow, you see a little ribbon of native plantings. We wanted to give kids especially an opportunity to, you know, kind of extend their stay, extend their experience and to continue to explore the park here. You know, we wanted to also provide a place for parents to sit and visit while their kids might play. And so this, you know, is kind of intended to extend that experience a little bit. Next slide. And so these are some images of the types of features and amenities that we thought could occur in this space. Again, as Steve mentioned, we would be, you know, working through construction documents to refine all of these things. But of course, we would have safety railings. We all got excited about this fishing rod holder that we found that, you know, could be mounted to the railing so people could still continue to fish. We'd love to see interpretive science to tell that story about the mill race and the other historic features of the site. Tables and chairs could be mounted or could be freestanding, but would allow for people to sit and have picnics. Fire pits come in all shapes and sizes. They also are available with covering so that, you know, people can't get too close to the fire. We wanted to maintain as much stone as we could, so stone seat walls, stone outcroppings, abutting those stairs. As far as the pavement surface itself, we wanted to keep it very simple with a concrete pavement with broom finish and joints. And then at the bottom, right there, a little bit more information about boulders and pathways. We were looking at a pavilion, which would be a future phase. Next slide. So back in 2019, we did do a cost assessment of all of the plaza features, just as Steve mentioned. We applied a typical prevailing wage cost that we use for public parks and other similar types of projects. We broke the project up into a few different categories. So you can see the budget costs are here. The entry plaza and upper plaza includes all of the items that are noted here for just over $200,000. Staff did think there could be some cost savings if some of the other landscape items could be completed internally. So things like removing trees, building the asphalt path, sourcing the tables and chairs and the interpretive signs, so there wouldn't be a markup for general contracting for those items. We also put a cost to the aesthetic improvements to the bridge enhancements. So we're not talking about anything structural happening there. And we don't believe that there needs to be anything structurally different about that outfall, but that is something that the engineers would be looking into. But just the concrete walk and the metal railings and the outcropping stones for just over $40,000. And then the lower plaza is costed out here, similar to the other one. It's got all of the site preparation, the concrete work, the railings, the outcropping stones and the landscape treatments. Next slide. And I think that's it. So, you know, with that, I'm happy to answer any questions about the Riverfront Park Master Plan and/or the plaza at this time.
Hi, Jody. It's Mike Lowery. I'm on Zoom myself. You can't see me.
I can.
Oh, you can. Oh, good.
Hi, Mike.
Oh, hey, hi, Jody. How long will this project take in terms of completion from start to finish?
Sure. So what we're looking at today are concepts. The next step would be for TESCA and the engineer to do construction documents and to go through permitting. That would probably take, you know, that, I would, I would, depending on when we begin, it would probably take, you know, maybe five to six months or so. From that point, there would be a public bid letting that would probably take a few months to go through the bidding process. And then for the village to review and award the bids and get a contractor underway. So if TESCA and the engineer were to begin, you know, say in the next month or so, I would guess that, you know, construction would probably be beginning at the end of 2022 or early 2023, depending on timeframe for, for all of those things.
Okay.
Sorry, that's not a very specific answer, but there's still some moving parts and pieces.
No, no, you answered it. It's a rough idea. That's very, yeah. And doing it over the winter would be good, I think. So yeah, right. Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah. Wintertime is the best time to do construction drawings because you can't be doing much else out there.
Right, right. Very good, very good.
Yeah. Trustee Lowery, to your question also, John and WBK Engineering, and they've already started looking into the permitting processes. Whenever you have a park that's near water, there's several entities that may be involved with this project. So we've actually, that's one of the things that we've had to vet out is which agencies we may have to receive permitting from. Construction timeline doesn't really hurt us if it's several months out because we have two events that we do in the summer. We have the fireworks typically down here, as well as now North Aurora Days. And with that, you wouldn't want to start this project knowing that it may not be completed in time for those summer events. So what we would probably do is the schedule works out favorably. I would assume that we will be looking at anywhere from fall to winter, you know, early spring next year to do this project.
I have a question about the budget numbers that were presented. Those numbers were reflective of 2019.
Yes. Yes.
So I mean, are we still going to be able to get everything that we wanted within the parameters of, of a revised budget? I mean, I'm assuming now costs must be. You know, at least 30% more than 2019 at least.
Correct.
It's an excellent question. So yes, this was something that we have discussed with staff. The, the budget that was done in 2019, as you mentioned, 2019 numbers are pretty different from today. That said, I feel like the, for landscape items, the cost of those. Have not gone up substantially as other things like steel prices. But even still, as part of this next phase of work, the construction document phase and working with the engineer. We would be looking more closely at those prices using current numbers. And that material would be presented back to staff and board. So this isn't going to be the last time for you all to review this. There will be other meetings where we'll be, you know, presenting updated materials, updated numbers. And we always have the option to coordinate or to draft our construction documents in such a way that. Other items are pulled out as like a bid alternate. So if there's a base bid, if we know we feel real good about certain things. And want to test the pricing of other things. We can always organize our construction documents that way and give the village more flexibility with regard to what projects you end up constructing.
And Jody, Jody, you hit it on the head there. The big thing for us will be is when we finalize in the next two agreements, there's substantial agreements. I mean, it's going to probably cost 50 or $60,000 in more engineering to finalize everything. But once they do that, you'll not only get a final number, but we're going to work, the staff is going to work to hone in on the actual project. So. Things like the asphalt, it said that the village may do that. That might be something that we can fit into a road program and do it separately there to get better pricing. We're going to try to look at alternates, as Jody said. So on that, that concept. It showed the entry plaza and it showed. A lower section that was kind of faded out and that was on purpose because. When we originally did it, the plaza was going to be much bigger. Then we talked about the bridge and the bridge or structure over the mill race, whatever you want to call it. Being in poor condition, WBK. They did an analysis of the bridge. We shifted some of the original funding a couple of years ago to then fix the bridge so that the adjacent piece to the plaza. Was it would look, so it would match. It would look nice. So we actually shifted funds from this lower part up there. We can always add that lower part back as an alternate. If the pricing comes back favorably, we can always add it into the project. If it's super high, we don't have to do it. So that's the next steps. The next steps would be to really finalize the project, hone in and, and come up with the final concept of it out.
I, I have some concerns about moving forward with the $400,000 project. When we don't even know what's going to happen to the dam. I mean, we've been waiting for what, six years for something to happen to the dam? And we don't, nobody has been able to tell us what the river is going to look like after the dams taken out. If that ever happens. So to spend this kind of money now. Even the engineering, I, I'm not really in favor of to spend 50 grand on engineering. Number one. The economy is not going to be. I, it, the economy could go either way i- if coronavirus continues next year. I don't think. It's a very wise use of taxpayer money without knowing. What's going to happen to the river and what the account, economy is going to look like in two or three months down the road. Because it's not trending well. And, and, and I have serious concerns about spending $400,000 or committing to spending $400,000 without. At least knowing what the riverfront is going to look like.
Sure. So the reason it's back in front of you tonight is for the simple fact that we did have an agreement with the, the IDNR and the Fox Valley Park District to. Remove the dam several years ago. It expired after the funding was essentially suspended for a while. And then it eventually the IGA expired. And once it expired, the funds went off the table. When the IDNR came back in, I mean, we're talking, this goes back probably to 2014. Early 2015 is I think, I think January 2015 is when the IGA was actually signed. The IGA, I think was for two years. And at this point, at that IGA was structured. So there were several checks and balances in place to go back to the board. To determine the effect of the mill race. Now, obviously the board members have changed it as from, from then, but at that time, the board had said. They had the opportunity to say, we didn't want to move forward with the dam removal if it affected the mill race. And I know the sediment, many board members had said is if the mill race is affected, we won't remove the dam. So based on that logic, we, we said, okay, fine. Well, let's sit on this project for a couple of years and see if it moves forward again. And if it doesn't. We can bring it back to the board and say, well, you're still going to get that chance. To say whether or not you want the dam to be removed once the report from the IDNR is presented to you. If it affects the mill race, it's been our understanding that you don't have to move forward with this project if you, if you don't want to.
Move forward with the.
With the dam being removed, if it affects the mill race and the board doesn't want it to be removed.
Except I am in favor of the dam. I've always been in favor of removing the dam from an environmental standpoint. That's why. What, how we were sold on it as a board seven years ago. So again. I, I still would have serious concerns about moving forward with this project. I, I, I think we're putting the cart before the horse. I think we should. Be pursuing removing the dam from an environmental standpoint, see what it looks like. And then come back with this proposal once that's been completed. And we, just my feeling.
And that, that's a valid point. And we are pursuing the dam removal. So the IDNR has been doing a study for, it's been what, John, about 18 months now?
Yeah, I was looking for their schedule. We do, we do have a schedule on like the. The, um. I guess the schedule of activities that they have planned thus far. They haven't gotten beyond the. When they're thinking the final construction documents are going to be completed, but. The schedule's been pushed back, I'd say, months at a time. And it's. I'm not confident that the schedule we've been presented is really any, of any use or accurate in any way right now.
Well, I, to me, I, I think the park looks good. There's aesthetically. I, I don't think it's an eyesore or it's in disrepair. I, I'm okay with the park looking the way, especially as we bring more and more events back here. The other thing, my other concern getting into the, the actual plan. Is we're adding all these features which are beautiful, but we're reducing the capacity of the park. If we're going to have a Fourth of July event or other events. And you have all these permanent features in the middle of the park, it makes it harder to have people with lawn chairs and whatever else.
Yeah, I don't think that's true though. I think this stuff is on the edge. I had that question.
So yeah, yes, that question came up recently and, and sitting on looking at the master plan, you look at the. The Mill Race and where its location is to the plaza. The plaza hugs the topography along the Mill Race. So it actually is.
Might create more seating, actually.
It, because it's got all of the, the coping seats, the retaining walls that people can actually sit on. It's not out in the open so much. It's not in the middle section. But your points are, are valid. That's the reason we're here tonight is nobody wanted to go forward with a concept that had the okay two years ago. Without going back to the board and deciding whether or not this was the right timing to go forward with it again. Or to see if you had any feedback on it. But this does serve as the entryway. So people will be able to. Enter the park, sit there, see the, the event. The other thing too, and, and I've pointed this out at with staff. When we talked about moving forward or not years ago. Everyone said, well, you can't move forward without knowing what the, what's going to happen to the Mill Race. The question for the board is even if you want to remove the dam. And it, let's say it does affect the Mill Race. Can the Mill Race area that's adjacent to this, is this dependent on the Mill Race or can the Mill Race be adaptively reused in any way? The plaza is a plaza to the park. It's, yes, it overlooks the Mill Race, but it doesn't necessarily. Have to overlook the Mill Race. That's not the primary function of it. So that was another reason we brought it back, but truth be told. We want to start moving on the park stuff. We want to get some stuff done. And if this isn't the right time for this one. There are other options out there like the festivals. The, the mayor I know has brought up several times to me. That he would like to look at the pavilion, which is actually having. The stage for festivals to come down here. That was something that's actually in our capital budget in a, two years down the road. To start that project. So once again, it's a good reset right now to see where the board's at with the project. Give an update on the dam removal. Like I said, it's been about 18 months. We're not sure exactly when we're going to get a report. We, I think we were supposed to get one in September. But like John says, it gets bumped back occasionally every few months and, and they're busy. So it's hard to, to get those updates.
Yeah, they have been having trouble hiring GIS people down there. So I mean, they're struggling with that. It's right now, the, the schedule I found. The actual dam removal design would begin July 11th of 2022. And that's assuming they probably make a bunch of these other milestones that, that are, they, they have scheduled out. So. The next one that I see. Is it looks like they're going to be trying to convert. Let's see. Well, it says by January 18th, they're going to have 75% of the report completed and out for review. So that might be our next milestone if we see something.
To me, I look at it differently. The dam removal to me is important as well, but I don't think anything hinges for me on this. Out here, it could be a dry creek bed. There could be other. Things down to that area down there. But I mean, I think the plaza itself is an important start to redevelopment down here. We talked about this for five, six, seven years. And I don't think one really, is it nicer view? Yeah. Would it make a good fishing spot? Yeah. But I mean. You know, so the dam goes away and that creek goes away. We just don't felt that area. I mean, I think it's. You know, makes the, that bridge area safer, but just makes more attractive just entering into the park. I don't think one has anything to do with the other. So I'm.
So you think it'd be with the removal of the dam. It was my understanding when we did this study and they were in from DNR and the. Park people that there was a way to perhaps engineer the.
Right, a pumper or some.
Yeah, they're just engineering the Mill Race.
But that's. Probably, you know, where that's.
That's going to be an, uh, an alternative that they're considering. So I think the last we left the agreement is that. I believe we had some direction that the Mill Race was intended to stay as part of the dam removal project. And if, if that was the case, the IDNR was going to present us with kind of alternatives. And. Show us what can be done and, and that part of it, if I'm not misunderstood, would be at our cost to fund that part of it.
The IGA is, so going back to the IGA, it was a $3 million IGA, half a million dollar was done for. The initial engineering and then 2.5. Million was set aside in the IGA for demolition of the dam. The first part, we put in several checks and balances with the park district. So what happened was. Was, and this is different, just so we're clear. And that's why I'm bringing it back up. The IGA is different than how we're working with the IDNR now. The original IGA, the IDNR wanted us to do the preliminary engineering, hire a company and then have it reimbursed by the state. In this case, the IDNR is actually doing the study right now for us, which is good. That's what we want. That's their experts in that. So we want them to do that. Exactly. In the, in the first part, the, they were going to do the initial engineering and it only started if both boards wanted to move forward. And then once it moves forward, they would finish that report, bring it back to the boards, let you see what the potential impact was on the dam removal. And both the Fox Valley Park District and the village had to approve moving forward. Before you can actually start the construction of phase of demolition. So there was a checks and balance to start. And then there was a checks and balances, as John was alluding to, to see the effects and determine whether or not you actually wanted to move forward after that. And I would imagine based on our conversations with the IDNR, when they started this. A year to 18 months ago, was that they were looking originally to have a similar IGA with us. So. Assuming that holds true, we would still have some checks and balances.
How long is that grant good for them?
You know, I don't have that in front of us. It was awarded as part of the, I believe the Rebuild Illinois Bonds. We have projects we can use it for, but we felt because as trustee Curtis brought up, the costs are probably different with this. This might be an opportune time to use that for this event because we already have the preliminary concept done. And the project's ready to kind of move forward.
So like, let me just ask you a couple of questions now. So, so the, the. Mill Race dries up, Mark, you think like creek bed, we can figure out something to put in there. I don't, you know, rocks. I don't know. I, I'm just thinking outside the box. But would that affect this drawing, this plan?
Yeah. So Jody, I hate to put you on the spot, but being a landscape architect, if Dave Arnt, is there a way to put the, um, the slide that shows the concept next to the Mill Race on the screen?
Molly's doing that. I can, I can speak to that question. So the purpose of the entry plaza and upper plaza and the sidewalk connections really is to. For one, improve the safety of that. Space over the Mill Race outfall. That is not a safe condition today. And so that. Would help address that. It would also help address. The connections between the parking lot and the village hall and the entry spaces. I can't see. So. The question is what to do if the Mill Race dries up? So. I don't think that's the, could, could we go to the other?
Uh, keep. Yeah, one more, I think. That, uh, one more, that one right there. That one.
Yeah, thank you. All right. Yes. Okay. So, um. Right. So if you are exiting the village hall from that exit door to the right. And wanting to walk into the park today, it's pretty unsafe walk. And so we want to make sure that that is safe and also. Comfortable and, and, and looks nice. So. Improving that walkway is kind of central to this. The entry plaza and the upper plaza are, you know, hugged up against that Mill Race area to provide, you know, a place. Proceeding and gathering and also to kind of look out onto the open spaces of the park. If the Mill Race were to not be water. Certainly it could be a dry creek bed so that during a heavy rainfall, it could still. Function as a, as a place for water to go. But the plazas are really just modest concrete pavements. With seating so that somebody could take their lunch outside. They could grab a cup of coffee and meet a friend. Parents can sit there and watch their kids while they play in the park. But certainly they're not dependent on the Mill Race being filled with water.
All right. Thank you. That's to answer my question. So really it doesn't matter if the Mill Race is there or not. The process of this design, we can, it can be moved forward and we can figure out something later to do with the Mill Race.
Correct. It wasn't what, it may not be what we originally thought it could be, but it could be something else.
So in other words, the market, they remove the dam and, you know, let's just say that Mill Race dries up, there's.
It could be walking.
Yeah, I'm not.
Would you put a fountain in there? I mean, could you make it a retention pond and put a fountain and some, still have it be some sort of water element? I don't know. What that costs of course.
Yeah, potentially. I mean, you know, landscape surface treatments, you know, could, could include anything from, you know, dry to. A series of native plantings that can sustain being wet periodically. There are water features, of course, you know, with water features, you're looking at. Either something that recirculates or something that you bring in water and then it just kind of splashes off onto the. Distance and you're paying for a water bill, but. All of those are options for sure.
But jokingly, my office is right there and the sun pump in Villital runs 90% of the day. And it spills right out into that area. So the water.
Better have naturally.
Can I just get clarification then? So is the $400,000 just for this? Part, the entry plaza? It doesn't include the overlook? In, in the other landscaping along the river?
Sure, I can address that. The, the budget that was presented addresses everything that's shown here. So all of the concrete, all of the concrete walks. All of the site furnishings, the elements that are part of the entry plaza, the concrete walks, the upper plaza. All of the surrounding outcroppings and seat walls, things like tables and chairs. Fireplace features, landscape restoration. All of the hardscape and softscape and excavation and landscape restoration. Associated with the entry plaza, the upper plaza and the walkways. Does that answer the question?
And that trustee Carol's point earlier about the paths. I mean, that's actually something I have a concern with when, when the mayor and I were looking at it the other day. And he was asking me about how far it goes out into the park. The plaza itself doesn't go far into the park, but we haven't finalized exactly what those connection paths, you can see them, the, what would look like asphalt going to the Fox River Trail. We haven't finalized exactly how that would go yet because some of that might be in prime seating area, that aspect of the, the connections to the plaza. So. I'm not sure that that's necessarily the final design as far as the path system goes, but the plaza should like. I don't remember, Jody, if you have, I don't have the diagram that shows the dimensions. I can't remember if it's 30 feet wide, but I don't think it goes significantly into the park.
No, and I guess a couple of things. One, so since we have topography here, so when you're at the entry plaza, you're at the highest point. The upper plaza is a couple of steps down and the future lower plaza is even further steps down. So the purpose of having the asphalt path. And it doesn't have to have this look to it, but the purpose of that connector is to provide somebody who cannot navigate steps. An accessible route into the upper plaza. So that is all kind of maintaining a ramping system down into there. So that is all kind of maintaining a ramping system down into there. Um but the comments about um maintaining as much open space as possible i- is well taken. And I guess if I could ask, could we go back to the overall plan for the whole park? And I can kind of point out how that relates. Oh, that's perfect. Okay, so I know that our entry plaza, our upper plaza, lower plaza is a very slightly different shape. But what you're looking at in the red box at the diagram on the right. Um, our plaza space basically still fits within the same general sh- size of what's inside of that red box. But if you look to the south, we have a hillside area. This is the area where the lawn slopes down. And that would be still maintained exactly as it is, you know, today on site. In that hill area, there's quite a few um outcropping stones where people kind of tend to sit. And so we um thought it was an opportunity to add more of those outcropping stones. You could still have places to sit. And then the large open lawn area to the south um would still remain open lawn. So this plaza area really is tucked up north, almost touching the village hall and the parking lot.
Okay, so that makes more sense. I I was confused that this diagram, I didn't catch that it was only, we're only talking about what's in the red box.
That's correct.
Okay, th- then I I still have concerns about the cost. But um but a- as far as this plan goes, on the south side of the village hall. There's no way for somebody who parks in those parking spots to get, without going back out to the sidewalk to the street. I think it would be cool to include in this plan either a bridge over the mill race from the south side of the village hall. Over to that little boardwalk or an elevated walkway along the wall, all the way up to the top of that. Entryway so that those people can enjoy that entryway from the south as much as the people who park in the back part.
The only thing is there are only like seven park parking places. I would imagine most people are gonna probably park back here or with the park district. Uh acquiring that property to the north, there might be additional parking, so.
But you got on the all the sidewalks come down right there from fifty-six, they all feed into that parking lot right there.
We looked at that um.
I I just don't think we need to add another, you know, thirty, forty, fifty thousand dollars for a bridge for seven parking spots.
Well, if that creek ends up dry, you could just.
I know we looked at that a a little while ago, actually. We thought that uh originally that was a good idea. I want to give credit to, I'm gonna say Mike Toad. We talked about even having a platform across it where people can fish off of it right in the middle of the mill race. But um aside from that being expensive, the other thought was your pathway along the side of our building. It the the grade is a significant change there. So that hill from the parking lot down to the water is steep. It was even hard for us to get rock down there and that we had to hire a company to lay all that rock because we didn't have the proper equipment for it. Um, going up the side of the building, I can't remember, John, if you remember, we talked about putting a sidewalk potentially in along our building. And once again, I it it would still be an expense. I'm not saying it wouldn't be. But projects like that, ancillary projects to this, we can do in the road program when we do, you know. Thousands of linear feet or hundreds of linear feet of sidewalk and we can bid that all at part of that, or if we do an asphalt trail, we can do that at the same time we're paving. Um to try to get better pricing as opposed to doing it on a small project.
So I I guess I'm a little confused why we are going into detail with this conversation when, to Mark's point, we still need to figure out what's going on with the dam. But we could sit here and talk about what we want, what we don't want. I mean, right now, we need to figure out the dam. I agree with Mark. We shouldn't be doing any planning until we we know what's going on with the dam.
I think the point was is that the the concept could be that whether the mill race is there or not, we could still put the improvements in. The only difference is if the mill race was not there, you wouldn't have the water element between village hall and the park. So beyond that, eh but with. On the other side.
That's on the, yeah, that's on the riverside.
Well, I feel like. Has it been nine years? Is that what? I mean, I'm a new member, right? So it's been nine years since they've been talking about taking out the dam and and there's it's we're still sitting here. It's nine years later.
That's the reason we're here. The reason we're here is we had a, we have a plan and it's hard to get that plan moving forward at any point. If we always put it on hold. And so the question is, you have, you know, board members, just from time to time, you want to bring them back and say, hey, this is where we're at. We want to remind you, we have a plan for this park. We're starting to do North Aurora Days down there. You have the fireworks. I know the mayor has talked about doing an event next winter potentially in this park as well. So you're starting to bring people down to the park. But we never built any of the amenities we said we would do for that very purpose was, you know, so what we want to see with the board is. Are you good with this concept? And that's okay if you're not right now. That's fine. That's why we're here for feedback and and.
My my concern, not to interrupt, but you know, I was here when 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 we initiated talks about the dam removal. And correct me if I'm wrong, but I remember seeing a slide that said the footprint of the north side of the river is going to shrink. And be more similar to the footprint on the south side. So my concern is, let's say our river shrinks by forty feet or thirty feet. Now we're gonna have all this dead space that needs to be redeveloped.
That's a whole different area than this that we're talking about, you know that, right?
So now what are we gonna have, like mush? I mean, I I really think this is something that should be tabled until we get a definitive answer. I think John said you should know something by January.
That's what their schedule is showing right now.
I I I'm all for tabling this until we get.
I I would, I would bring it back in January if I actually thought it was gonna be here in January. I mean, we've had this pushback. I I mean, John, what what is your take that it's actually gonna be January?
Uh, I'm not confident in that, but I will reach out to the representative I have contact with and find out.
Yeah, and and going Laura, to your point, the the river, the effect on the river. And and trust me, I'm not, I'm not trying to push this in any way. I'm just simply saying that the effect on the river is different than the effect on the mill race. Because the shoreline, like this concept is on a completely different side of the park. It's not on the river shoreline. It's on the mill race. So even if the river disappeared, the mill race would be dry. You'd still have a dry mill race. It it's not dependent, so to speak, on the shoreline of the river shrinking.
Oh, I'd like to come and get in on this a little bit too, uh because I listened to what uh trustee Carol said. And I have a tendency to be prudent and kind of uh concerned about spending money, taxpayers' money. Um, however, I I'm hearing uh from a variety of different um positions. That the the mill race issue is moot uh regarding uh our our moving forward with this project. I I am I wrong? Uh it it will not make any difference uh whether the mill race dries up or not. Uh in terms of how this plan is um uh how this plan unfolds.
Correct. Trustee Lowery, to your point, if the if the dam was removed and the mill race went away. You would just have a dry creek bed where that next to that plaza, and that would be what we would have to um adjust to.
We would still have the plaza area and the little sitting area that that we discussed. Well, I don't see the problem with not moving forward. I'm kind of on the side of uh proceeding. Uh prudently, of course, but proceeding s- in order to get this um project leased, moving forward a little bit. Instead of treading water. Uh and as much as I I don't like to disagree with Laura, I I I think. Uh tabling it would be a mistake.
I to uh trustee Curtis, to your point, if the river did, if the dam went away and the river did shrink further away. Yes, the answer would be it would be harder for the mill race to get to that side and which is why.
To me, I don't care what happens with the mill race. Let it stay, let it go. I don't care. I'm just saying. This should not be something we should be discussing so in depth until we know what's happening with the dam. Especially like Mark said, we don't know what's going on with COVID, with the economy, the price of materials are gonna fluctuate. I don't think this should be a priority.
Steve, where is the source of, I maybe I should know, but I don't. I want you to clarify for me. What is the source of funding that's gonna pay for these improvements?
This is in our capital fund primarily with a grant from the state that we're gonna use to offset a part of the cost.
So we have those funds already or are that?
Uh we have to, we have to put in an application for the funds. We've been notified by the state that we have money set aside for an infrastructure project. What's that?
How much is the grant?
Two hundred and twenty-five thousand.
Eh but we could use that.
We can use it for other infrastructure projects, yeah. It doesn't have to be for the park. We verified, we called them to make sure that we could, but um it could be used for anything, uh road project, water main.
Well, I would say my opinion is to is to, from what I know, eh my opinion is to go forward. And as someone who um was recently elected, I talked with, you know, constituents out there. People are very interested in having something, and I think Todd would tell you, he heard the same thing when you were walking around, talking to residents, that they really want something. In this area that kind of makes it feel more of a gathering place, a community place to gather. Um, I feel like it's been nine years and we're still waiting. And that part of the river over here is not really gonna be affected by what's what these improvements are. So my thought would be that I would want to proceed. That's my opinion.
I think um I I agree with um Mark Carroll and Laura. But the whole idea of the park to what we're, this process we've been talking about, I think adds to the village. Uh, I don't, I don't think holding it up. Well, take it back. I agree with you, Mark. I want the the dam to be removed. And and I I was under the understanding that the mill race would stay, but even if it dried up, the project can continue. And as far as your shoreline, you're right, the shoreline is gonna shrink. It just does. And then I was told by the people from the D N R, they put some type of plants and they. They dress it up so it looks pretty nice, so but I think the project should go forward. That's that's where I.
And and I want to reiterate to your point, when the IDNR, and and like I said before, we're glad the IDNR is doing the work. Cause that's what the, that's their niche. They're really good at it. It it goes back to the board to decide whether or not to, you know, it's been our understanding, they're not gonna take the dam out without our consent.
Correct.
That's what we've been told several times. So you will get to see, that's what we've been told, that the board will get a say on whether the dam goes or not. So you'll get to see the effect of that dam removal down the line at some point. And if it affects the mill race and you don't want the mill race to go away, you'd have the ability to say, well, we don't want to remove the dam at this point. That's how the I G A was structured too.
I I I understand, I remember that discussion. And that my my reasoning for removing the dam has nothing to do with the aesthetics of this park out here. It has to do with the fact that it's killing fish and stifling uh quality river life behind the dam. So I I don't think, I think my my opinion is, is I don't care what the mill race looks like or what this park looks like. I if it's an environmental hazard, it should be removed. Um eh but I I will say. That I don't, to your point, Carolyn, we've waited for nine years. I don't see the harm in waiting a couple of months to get a report from the state of Illinois to see where. And and if at the i- if, you know, at our beginning of February meeting, we don't have a report and the board wants to move forward, fine. I I I mean, that's fine, but.
It's fair enough.
I I I mean, I don't see, we've waited nine years. What's?
I mean, if that's what the board wants to do, I can surely follow up with the IDNR and and see if we get our report and wait on that for now.
I mean, I'm in favor of removing the dam. I I think that that's that's the best thing for the river. But I I do see it, the way I'm understanding it, is if the shoreline shrank, that would be just a different issue from where this is gonna be developed. But I don't have any problem with it. You're right, nine years, what, two more months? Not a big deal.
Yeah, we're good.
So.
Steve, Steve, can I? Um, can uh can the state be apprised of our situation and get to the kind of move on a decisive? Kind of a a final decision of some kind or another?
Yeah, eh we can reach out.
Some contingencies here that we need to deal with that it it puts us in a bind. Because the state isn't responding yes or no or whatever. So.
My opinion, one, I'm gonna go back to that. I don't think one has nothing to do with the other. The river narrows, that's the whole issue. Different than this plaza. Yes, nothing to it than if, you know, environmentally, fine, but I I do care about this park. So environmental, yes, take the dam out. But um this plaza just has nothing to do with that dry bed or wet, whatever.
Right.
We've waited nine years. I just think it's something that we need to move on and uh we can wait a couple of months, that'd be fine. I I I don't see. If they give a decision on, yeah, take the dam out and your creek beds dries up. It's still an entry to the plaza. I mean, you're not really sitting looking at the creek. It's a nice addition to have the water flow there and I hope it stays. Because, you know, we have residents down the way that have it behind their house as well. I mean, it's a nice added thing. But my own opinion, it's kind of immaterial with the plaza versus the river narrowing and other things, so.
And we wouldn't bring the project forward if we didn't have um an extremely solvent capital fund right now, and we do. And so financially.
I agree about spending money, but the residents expect things in town. They're not opposed to us spending money on projects that enhance and brings them to our village. We have so many people leaving our community to go other places to do things, you know? This is just one chance we have to improve our park. Uh enhance the, you know, lives of people. They can come down here and spend time and money in our town. Instead of going to Batavia or Napo River Walk or other places and it starts one step at a time and this is the one step. And I don't think, like I said, the dam has nothing to do with it. Uh, the spillway, like I said, great to have it, but you can't hang your hat on that. Um, and if it's a dry and put native plants, it might even look just as cool. So I I just think it's like I said, we sometimes don't see the trees in the forest and we just don't get hung up on something. And it's just, to me, my own opinion, I think it's a first step of really doing something great down here. And I think it's, I think it's worthy of it. So like I said, spend the money. It does, you know, we spend money. You're right. Um, we could do something else with it, but I just think this is a value-added idea, that it's not a waste of money and it's an improvement, uh kind of the quality of life. And and it just brings people and keeps them in town. We've talked about that over and over again with the silo and with, let's do this. And let's move the fire station, and let's do this, and let's do this, and let's do this. But there's a chance to do this. And we're all kind of hemming and hawing over it, so.
Well, not all of us.
Or I think it's a good thing and I'm for it. Yeah, I'm okay with waiting two months and.
Yeah, I'm okay with two month wait. That's not that much time to 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 put it off. But I agree with the mayor that uh I don't think the mill race, whether it's there or not, has anything to do with the project. I I think the project can move forward independent of the mill race. If it's there, that's just an added boost. If it isn't, we can make something do with uh, you know, planting or waterways or something. Uh, so I agree. Let's move forward.
I think the narrow of the river is another fight up that we'll have to have with whoever, when it narrows and what, how are we gonna improve it? That's gonna be a whole separate.
I mean, if that happens, that's us working with the park district, cause that shoreline will be theirs.
Right. I mean, that's a whole different thing we want to look nice to. We don't want it to be mud and just whatever floating by. We want want it to look nice. That's a whole separate thing we're challenging to have, so. That's right, man.
Yeah, we won't have to change if if uh if uh the situation occurs that we weren't expecting by the re- with the removal of the dam. We won't have to change anything that we do to the park anyway, is how I see it. Yeah, once we do uh improve the park according to this plan or some similar plan to this. Uh, don't you think that uh it'll improve the park per period? And whether the race is there or not, mill race is there or not, is not connected to the rest of it, is how I see it. So the dam removal, which I'm for a hundred percent for the same reason uh uh Mark Carroll is. Uh, I say we move forward with it. Uh, if you want to wait two months and hopefully the state will give us some definitive answer. I'm all for that as well.
Right, and we should probably push that we want the mill race to stay, whatever, forward and see where that goes with the state. And that's an important piece, but.
The first step will be for them to give us that report where they actually show us, it might be able to stay without us even, you know. They're gonna show us what the removal would look like and then we'll figure it out from there.
Yeah, so we either spend the money now or spend it later, whatever, but uh uh we have it now, so I say we move forward.
Yeah, you're.
Not not right away. Uh, if you guys, if the the board wants to wait two months and make sure, and hopefully the state will respond. Uh, I'm fine with that. I think you all agree on that.
We'll reach out to the IDNR. Um, like I said, I know they've been working hard. It's just it's tough. John said they're they're probably short-staffed in some capacity. And it's it's been for with COVID, they weren't in the office for a long time, so I don't know how that affected them, so we'll get you somebody. We'll see where we can get an update.
I I'm in favor of the project. I just, I I I. I I'm happy we're waiting a a month and a half or whatever. And I I I'm generally in favor of enhancing the park. Absolutely. I think it'll bring a benefit to the village.
All right. Um, we're gonna have an exec session after this here and. Um, we're gonna have a exec session after this here and uh we'll have a for personnel. And I have a motion adjourned.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close the same sign. All right, thank you. Sec session shortly.